I will call our work session to order of June twenty second. Um, we have two items. One is the establishment of goals and objectives to guide staff in developing the budget for two thousand and twenty-two. And then discussion of the city mission and vision statements, and I'll pass it to city manager Rodriguez just to review the rundown of how we'll um discuss these items.
Thank you, Mayor, and we're gonna flip-flop those. We're gonna, we're gonna begin at the top of the planning pyramid with a discussion of mission and vision. And that is um focused on, on the ends, the outcomes, and that is very council-driven. And then we'll work our way down the pyramid and we'll um go through goals and objectives, which is kind of in the middle. And then we'll end with a, a discussion of action steps, which is focused on the means to the ends and very much established by staff. So Communications Manager Roland's presentation is gonna start the process to, to create a mission and vision statement, and we hope to incorporate that into the strategic plan. Again, we're not writing them tonight, but we're hoping to get your out, your inputs so we can start that process. Uh typically in strategic planning, they will, they'll update their mission and vision, but because we haven't updated them in many years, we're trying to start that process now. We'll, we'll bring your input back with drafts of statements. And hopefully we'll get this done so we don't take up too much time during the formal strategic planning. So um Neil's, sorry, Manager Roland's presentation, you're in for a treat tonight because Neil's a really cool facilitator, but his, his presentation should be about an hour. And then mine is gonna focus again on those goals and objectives. And, and uh that'll be about thirty minutes. So with that, I can pass it to Manager Roland.
Alright. So I know that all of you know me, we've either done facilitations in the past, but my biggest thing throughout this, I have a quick presentation, no joke, it's like seven slides, so it'll go very quick. Um and you'll probably through it, we'll see why we need to have this conversation. Um, not just for the work you do, but also the work, for the work as staff that we do to once again develop that shared vision, that shared culture together. Um, but when we get to the actual facilitation, a lot of the questions I might ask you might seem to be either super broad or very like contemplative. And feel free, you, you know, participate. If you wanna participate more than once, or if something that one of you says sparks an idea, um, really the more information you can give me, and I'm gonna do this at several levels of the organization, the better we will all be. Nothing, no common or anything you could think of is invalid right now. It's, I'm really just about collecting as much information about, you know, the feel and what we do. So um, yeah, so as I said, you always ask me questions, but like um it was, you know, the conversation will evolve based on kind of how you guys are, uh what you're saying. So what is a mission statement? Um, it's a formalized summary of the aims and values of an organization. Organizations with really, really strong cultures, their staff can point to it. They, they can recite it in their sleep essentially. But they're very, very concise. Personally, my preference is that they're pretty much as short as possible. There's some organizations that have three, four-word mission or vision statements, and I'm much more inclined to say the shorter, the more specific you can be, the better. The longer they end up getting, sometimes the more interpretati- interpretation there might be, as well as the inability to like remember them for the most part. But they never really get too long, and it really shows everybody, as I said, internally and externally, City of Richfield, what do we stand for? Vision statement is a lot less concrete. A vision statement is something that really you aspire to. And it's something that you aspire to, not over one year, not over even a strategic plan or a decade. A lot of them, you know, span as much as twenty or thirty years. So it's like, hey, what, you know, what, what do we, you know, what do we strive for in absolutely everything we do? Um, my favorite one that I have seen um is Disney's personally. Disney's vision statement is make people happy. That's it. And if you think about what Disney does, from their movies to their theme parks and anything, like that's really the whole goal of kind of what they're going for. I don't work for them, but like it's, you know, it, it kind of makes sense when you think about it in some regards. And it's very, very simple, and it's something that, you know, any team members, they like to call it, or cast members, they like to call it, um can point to. Um, and as I said, it's aspirational. It's not just, you know, what we do, like obviously we want it to be a lot of what we do, but it's also, you know, where we want to go, almost like a, a small word roadmap in many regards. And just, you know, provides, you know, kind of, you know, declarative philosophical goals. A lot of times people get confused of like mission versus vision statement, because a lot of times they can be seen as somewhat similar, but I think it did a pretty good job of breaking the either ors down. But the mission statement focuses on today. Uh, what do we do? Who do we serve? And how do we serve them? That's really kind of the breakdown of a really, really strong mission statement. Vision statement does, doesn't focus on today, focus on tomorrow, focuses on next week, focuses on next year. Um, and what are our hopes and dreams? You know, really, you, you can be, as I said, that level of aspirational, like, you know, what, what is Richfield two, three, four-point-oh type thing? Um, and what problems are we solving? And, you know, what are we, what are we looking to change? Um, as Katie was talking about, this is kind of when you're talking about strategic planning in general. Um, this is the pyramid that a lot of people do, um where, you know, your vision is your absolute top, 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 top. And you go mission, goals, strategy, tactics, and action plan. And it's just, you know, say it's, it's the way that they all trickle into each other. Um, where, you know, mission affect, a vision affects your mission, affects your goals, like, you know, and vice versa, whereas usually at the bottom, they don't affect up quite as much of setting that overall goal. Um, so we did a lot of research. The city has had missions, statements in the past. Um, the problem is most of us, um, when we were doing research, couldn't find the concrete last one we did. This was the closest thing that we could find. Um, and it specifically says this, "Richfield mission is to be known as the best place to live, work, learn, and do business in the Twin Cities area. We are a customer-focused and caring community that strives to foster a sense of neighborliness." Not, honestly, not bad, especially that second sentence. Kind of hits home of, you know, has many aspects of what a strong mission statement is. But at the same time, there's a few things where like, if you think about the first sentence, it's very jargony, like it, it's almost like something a tourism board would, I would say, come with, which it's not bad. It's just saying that it's, it might need some tweaking. And specifically, like at the end, you never want your mission statement to be vague enough where people can kind of, you know, add their own meaning to it. And as much as I like the term neighborliness, it might be a little too vague for a lot of folks, you know, to say, this is what we're all about. Uh, this is the vision statement we found. Richfield, your urban hometown in the heart of the Twin Cities. More of a declarative statement than an actual vision of what you want the organization to be. So, as I said, just a great opportunity for us to have, you know, talk with different levels of the organization and find, you know, what we're kind of looking for for our vision statement. Um, the comprehensive plan does a lot better job putting a vision statement together, but also at the same time, um, I won't read it, but it's, it's super long, where it like, it covers a lot of areas. Um, it might be, you know, it's really too long to incorporate into a full um type vision statement. We're trying to, you know, take something like that and condense it on down to like maybe a sentence or two, um, to really reflect, you know, kind of what we're going for here. So that was, I said, that was all of, you know, my formal presentation. And I said, what we're gonna do now is we're gonna have a facilitation, where the two separate ones, um, one for vision, one for, one for mission. And I said, it's really, this is on you guys really having a conversation more with yourselves even than with me, of just, you know, what, you know, you're hoping for the vision is, or what, you know, kind of the things that like, oh, the City of Richfield organization elicits for you um as well. So just starting out, um, if you had to sum up Richfield, and this is everyone, you know, just to jump in on this, if you had to sum up Richfield in one word, what would it be?
I don't know that I have one word, but one word that comes to mind, and I guess it's a phrase, is down-to-earth.
For sure, for sure. Phrases work too.
I would say comfortable. When I'm in Richfield, I feel, feel comfortable.
Very good.
I would say, excuse me, I would say active. Because I think the residents are very active in everything that goes on here. I would say, you know, I don't know if that fits the mold, but that's what I would say.
This is resident-focused, but I would just say home.
No, absolutely. What do you, what do you mean by that?
I just mean for multiple generations, Richfield's been home for our family and it just, when I think of Richfield, that is the overwhelming sense of placeness and belonging and Richfield, Richfield's home.
Absolutely.
As a much newer resident, I was also gonna say home, um, and then this is almost so vague as to be unhelpful, but also community.
No, absolutely. That makes sense. Now, I know that as, you know, Councilmember Chapman was saying, like, home for him is this multi-generational thing. And you, I know, decided to move here more, uh, more recently, and especially from out of state. Does, you know, does that home feeling mean something just a little bit different for you potentially?
Um, well, I think for me, my experience was just having, starting working here and meeting people that um even before I lived here, I felt that, that like this was, it's, it's close-knit that people, um, there, that's again, that strong sense of identity, that this is a place where people who live here know like they're in Richfield, and that's important to them, and that enticed me to wanna be part of that.
No, that's, that's absolutely phenomenal answer.
I would say welcoming. So is there a word for once you get to Richfield, you never wanna leave? That word?
That works. That absolutely works. The opposite of incarceration. Sean, what about you? Can you think of a word potentially?
I struggle with the one-word assignment. Uh, I'll say two things. One is, the first one is kind of refusing your assignment, which is there's a, a phrase that is actually used by a page that criticizes me frequently, but I do use it honestly with, with uh my friends, but just part your heart, and I do like it just because it, it says that we're humble, we don't take ourselves too seriously, but there is a sincere love for this community. But taking your assignment exactly as it was, I was thinking empowering in the sense of when you reach out to local government, there's a, there's a real response, and there's an ability to change things in your community you want for the better, and I think that is empowering for residents. I think that's an important value.
Kind of along that same lines, I, you know, our tagline, the urban hometown, which hopefully, you know, our mission and vision will be that easily known to all of us. You know, I know you've all hit on kind of the home part of it, but, you know, what does that urban hometown mean to you? Like, what's your definition of that?
I think I would say, um, I think of kind of having the best of both worlds and living, uh, maybe in greater Minnesota or in a smaller town where you really know your neighbors, it's neighborly, it's friendly, you feel the sense of community, but you also have access to the amenities, culture, um, and diversity of all kinds, um, of, of a metro area, and you have it all here.
Well said, well said. What do other people feel about the urban hometown tagline? Kind of emotions does it elicit? Go for it.
Uh, I do, one, one thing that's just interesting to me is how there's like a hundred and eighty-degree difference between the way people interpret that, and it's like the urban hometown or the urban hometown um in terms of how people's perspective on that. But um personally, it's, it's very similar to the mayor's comment, but I think it's, to me, it's like the, the form of a city, the physical form of a city, but the community of a small town, um, and the accessibility of a small town.
So I would say the urban part's like very open-minded. And the hometown part is like very s- safe, like you can be who you are and nobody's gonna judge you.
Gotcha.
I would say for me, it's um sort of like a like bucking of stereotypes, um, that there is, yes, we're urban, but we still have that close-knit community. And yes, we're a hometown, but also we're not, yeah, like backwater kind of, I don't know, but I, I see it as like a we are going to unapologetically be part of the city and really proud of who we are and have that strong identity.
For sure, for sure. The first thought, definitely like two sides of the same coin almost. Simon, what about you?
Okay, I'm just, I'm just thinking, like the hometown idea always kind of evokes like Lake Wobegon to me. And it's like Lake Wobegon meets Dinky Town. I don't know, like.
Be a much more contemporary tagline.
Yeah, I, I would not, I would not put that out for um, for, and, and that's not even the right name, but you, you, but you get that, so there's
No, for sure, for sure.
Two different things that are, that are, that are juxtaposed.
Absolutely. Um, so, you know, along the same lines, like, you know, you've all been active in city government, you know, at different levels too. It's not just been as council member. You've also, some of you have been commissioners, um, you know, as well. Um, what project, can you think of a project or initiative that you were proudest of, or it doesn't even mean you're proudest of, but that you were really, really proud of? And, you know, why did you feel that project was needed uh in our community? I said, it can be anything. It could be something you worked on, Human Rights Commission, or, you know, transportation or anything like that, like think of any project, doesn't have to be anything huge, doesn't have to be, you know, the, you're, the universally inclusive playground that's coming or something like, you know, it could be something procedural, could be the addition of a certain position or anything like that, um, you know, and kind of putting you on the spot here, and that's the whole point of this exercise, but, you know, can you think of anything that kind of falls into that category?
I wasn't a part of it, but I get to be a part of kind of the continuation of it, and that was the development of the Veterans Memorial Site. I'm, I'm very, very proud of that in our community. And I think it's, it's an image that you see it, and a lot of people know that's Richfield. Um, and we used art and bringing community together and honoring our veterans. And we put it as a centerpiece in our community and one of our most important areas. And it's a place um that lifts up our history and Richfield residents and the history that we have in our nation's, um, in our nation's history. But also, it's a place that we continue to meet. It's, it's this beautiful multi-generational just space where we use it for so many things, um, coming together, and it kind of just uses placemaking, art, um, honoring uh our veterans and, and it's, we just, it's just so great on so many levels, and I just love um that we get to use that, and I'm very thankful to the people who were a part of that.
No, for sure.
I, 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 two, two projects come to mind. One is the, is the Chamberlain, which kind of like Maria, I had, I had less to do, I kind of came in at the tail end. But just the, the, the opportunity that we had to preserve affordable housing, build new housing, take union pension funds and create really great jobs. Of like, I'm like, oh, this is like a great program that just pushes people forward in a lot of different spaces. And then the um, the renters down assistance, uh, down payment assistance program for people that have been in Richfield but wanted, and renting and wanted to own, to just say, as a community, we're gonna make a capital investment in that, in that dream or opportunity. Um, not to dwell on it too, but I was just reading today that um about fifty percent of people who buy homes have family assistance to make that down payment. So those kinds of transformative investments that a city can do to say, we're making an investment in families to stand in that gap, I just, I think is great.
No, for sure, absolutely. Go for it, Sean.
Um, honestly, Sixty-Six Street continues to be like the biggest thing that I'm really proud of. Um, there that could have gone so much worse in terms of just like a big arterial needs to be rebuilt. It could have been so much less, and it was such a long process that brought so many people together from obviously county that wanted cars to move smoothly, to people, to the sidewalk poetry, to the landscaping, to everything, and there were so many stakeholders. And so many things that came together for this identifiable main street that's like, I think one of, physically one of the best features of our community today. So I'm really proud of how that turned out.
That's a great example.
I think for me, um, I keep coming back to the efforts that first inspired me to run, which, and really uh was an example of what Sean was speaking to earlier of um, how everyday people can get involved and make a difference, and that was um after, or around the time that Seasons Park went up for sale, and the council at the time was working on the uh tenant protection ordinance and the first, uh, well, not even the first, the first formal inclusionary housing policy. Um, and just being part of like a, a group of people who like coordinated events. It was like in a partnership with Veep and also just like random community members who cared about it, and then did work to meet with neighbors and work with the council and the staff to like look at the various drafts of the policy and like add in some things that made it stronger. And I remember like talking to um some of the like housing policy wonk kinds of organizations and um, they suggested a couple changes, and then with community speaking up, it was like, oh yeah, like, of course we can do that. And these groups without community support had like, had a really hard time closing some of those loopholes in other communities. And so it was just a a cool thing to be part of, and again, really see like, okay, if we come together, we can impact the, the outcomes.
Very, very true.
The thing that came to mind was the school referendum campaigns that I was involved with, and it was like, a lot of other districts had a lot more money because they'd been grandpersoned in, and Richfield had to come together to do that. And then secondly, I think I would think of that Kids at Home program, which I had nothing to do with, but I think it's a great program. So it kind of builds on that. And then the third thing, which I also had nothing to do with, but I think of, I like all the, like, the murals around town, like on the side of Broadway Pizza and, and the different places. It gives like that sense of community when you see that artwork.
For sure, for sure. Now, I know a lot of you, you know, whether you were running, when you were running for office, or you know, you still have conversations with residents daily, hourly, depending on, you know, the, the day. Um, can you think of a time when you had an, an interaction with a resident that had um a positive experience uh with the city service and how that made you feel?
Um, I think one thing that went in the, the bulletin last week was we had a, a neighbor that just moved in less than forty-eight hours. And a huge oak tree fell, crashed on their car, just was across, laid across the street, and then within, within like three hours, multiple city staff departments had been out there, were just in touch with the, with the family, had cleared the road. By the time I like went to the store to get water to bring back to staff, they had already cleared the road and were gone on a Sunday afternoon. So that was one of those, like, holy cow. And it, all, all the city, all the residents were just like, wow, that's amazing. So I, that, that kind of sticks in my mind. And I think also a thing that maybe just like counterintuitively, I really, I don't know that I enjoy, but there's something really satisfying when there's a group of really dissatisfied residents. I think of the Chamberlain with Maria, that was like the first group of like really angry, like, a bunch of people, like, we're, we're coming for you and the city kind of folks, and to hear that and receive that, and then be able to move somewhere, and I know there've been a number of situations like that. So sometimes it's not victory, and like, I went from I, I like despise and don't trust the city to I love you, but it's there to, oh, I didn't understand that. Now's a way to move forward is like, still feels like a great victory. And like something that gives me a lot of satisfaction.
I would, um, I, I have those experiences so many times, every single day, and I feel so um thankful that you know, our staff does such a great job in responding to our residents across the whole city, and people are always wowed, impressed. They always say, this is consistent with, you know, my experience in the past, this is why we love Richfield. It's just that personal connection that our staff offers to our residents and their response. But I think the ones that get me the most, and there's so many of these, are the individuals and the families who maybe didn't previously feel connected to the city or their local elected officials, or didn't know who to contact, and whether it was through a personal relationship I had, or someone knew someone who told them to call me or a city staff. Um, those folks that now know that didn't know before, that they have a city that's there to support them, and they can call any one of us, whether it's staff or council members, um, to serve them. I think those are the ones that I get I'm most proud of, um, because we all are public servants to our residents and, and we act in that way every single day, but it's um building those bridges where they didn't exist before that I get most excited about.
For sure, for sure.
I think a recent example was um after the cattail fire at Veterans. There are all these people who are like, wow, you know, that was amazing, and you saved them, saved it, and all that kind of stuff. So there was this overwhelming sense of appreciation for that.
Um, I think, I don't have a, a super vivid example of this, but the most common thing is residents who reach out and are, you can sometimes tell by the tone of their email, they like think this is like a protest email that no one's gonna respond to. Um, and between, like, I know sometimes it's us and sometimes it's directors, but like even if it's like four or five days later, people are still often like, oh, this is great, like, thank you for responding, it's been addressed, whatever. Um, so that's one. I think the most vivid example I have is um from this past summer, I um, I think it was when I was door knocking, um, but I talked to someone who had like just moved into town, and uh they were near Christian Park, which I used to live right next to, and so had spent a, a fair amount of time in, and like, don't get me wrong, Christian Park is, is great, but it's not like the park that most people think of in town as like the top thing, and this person was just like so ecstatic about it and was like, this is the best park, and um, and I was like, just wait, there's more. Um, but just like having, having someone um come in and just be so happy about our parks, um, that, that, that really stood out to me. Um, yeah.
That's a great example. Doesn't have to be, you know, something earth-changing, it's just one of those positive interactions where, oh, we're definitely doing, you know, something right here.
I just think a general theme that is, I've been thinking about as, especially as a, a new council member of sort of, how do you provide? I don't, I don't like the term customer with people, but it's, it's a widely-used term. So how do you provide good customer service when you're, when the right answer is not the answer they wanna hear? Um, and that's something that I think I'm personally learning, it's something that I've seen that I really appreciate. It was just, it's, I probably just on the top of my mind because it just happened today, but there was a, a resident who emailed me about a speeding problem on her street, and actually Director Asher gave a response to it, and it was not, you know, it wasn't an immediate outcome that she wanted, but just because it was explained so clearly, and she understood what the process was and why it is that way, her response was very positive, and she seemed to receive that. And I think it's the same thing, like personally, I got a call, and I recall about the garbage thing recently, um, after the vote. And just, just listening to the person and talking through, I understand where you're coming from, here's why I felt the way I did and why I supported it, and just going through that, and the call ended pretty well. I don't know that he, you know, likes me, but it, I, you know, I, I think it's helpful to just be honest and not always just try to give the answer that's going to please them, but the honest answer that respects where they're coming from.
Absolutely. That's, you know, from the communication side of things, it's one of the things we heard a lot throughout the conversation, was even people that may have been opposed to organized collection, they did appreciate the amount of work and time and effort put into it, so, you know, that's, you know, it is nice to hear that. So as we were talking about this, you know, talking about being more aspirational and stuff, and um, the next one is like, so thirty years from now, right? You know, the organization, we know, most of us in this room will probably be retired um from working for Richfield. Um, you know, if you, maybe you guys will still be elected officials thirty years from now. Um, but, you know, just thinking of that, you know, three decades from now, uh, you know, in twenty fifty-one, how do you, how would you hope that the organization would maybe evolve? Whether it's a new service, whether it's a different way of offering something, or, you know, adding a department, or like, you know, any, really any, like, you could pick, you know, anything you really want. It could be super abstract, it could be super specific, but you know, what would be that one thing that you would hope the organization would evolve to, to, you know, to offer or to be? Um, and why?
Oh, so I, I feel very strongly about this, and it's not, you know, super short and direct, but I just feel like we have But I just feel like we have the best of so many things in Richfield. Um, we have an amazing, beautiful, diverse community and it has a, a rich history and diversity of all kinds. We're very small. We have a transportation system that's a grid system. We're located right in the middle of the heart of the metro. We um, we have the best water around. We have excellent, amazing staff that really love the community. Many who are from the community, who grew up here, um, who are dedicated. And I also think um, you know, the fact that, on the city council, that we are nonpartisan. Like a lot of other small cities, I think is a good thing as well. And so I think in many ways, we have every single thing we need. Um, and we also have unique challenges because of who we are. But I think that that's all the right ingredients to focus on. Excellent and exceptional delivery of services, which we've always done in ways that are creative, nimble, adaptive. Um, responsive because it's the nature and kind of who we are in our personality. But also the situation and who we are in many ways um, requires that. And I just think, thinking, focusing on the how we do the work we've always done and what that looks like. And how do we infuse creativity um, and kind of innovation into that? Because we are small and nimble, I, I think that's just something that we have, that so many other communities don't have. In terms of the ingredients to be able to do that.
Makes a lot of sense.
I think for me, um. The, in terms of an aspirational goal, this is not really something we can just do on our own. And it's so interconnected to regional and like national, uh, whatever, both historically and ongoing. But just that, I would love for us to be a community where you can't predict how healthy someone is. How much money they make, what kind of housing they're gonna be in by their like skin color. Or, or like interconnecting, like you can't predict their health outcomes by their income. Or like, and I, I know that's um, connected to like the equity work that we're like so focused on lately. And building, but I, in terms of like an aspirational goal. I mean, I, I've talked about it in our affordable housing work. Like I want a hundred percent of our housing to be affordable to whoever's living in it at that moment. And like, yeah, so I, I think addressing and overcoming the many disparities that exist. Is the big, big thing for me.
That's a, that's a, that's a great answer. That's really good. What else? Go for it.
I think, when I think thirty years down the road, I can reflect on like growing up in Richfield and the history of Richfield. And the, the two words that, that come to my mind are prosperity and equity. I want our city to be prosperous and I want our city to be equitable. And when I think retrospectively, in some ways we've really succeeded. In other ways, we are, we are a postage stamp of what we weren't, once were, maybe eighty years ago. And there's been a, a series of compromises and we've lost land, we've lost space. So now we're kind of in between this place. So we are on a, like a multi-generational track of, we have to be really careful and good stewards. We also, something I just kind of carry in my heart, being a Richfield kid, is just how put down Richfield was growing up. You know, when we're just playing sports and people like, I mean, people just wouldn't come to, like, oh, that, that's the ghetto. You know, that was the first, well, of course, you know, like an absurd perspective, but like an earnest feeling that people had. When I, when I was growing up and just kind of dealing with that and like being grumpy about it. And, and still, still feeling sometimes like I, I'm in Pawnee next to Eagleton, for those of you that have watched Parks and Rec. You know, that, that um, we can stand up for ourselves and be prosperous, but in an equitable way.
Oh, for sure, for sure.
Yeah, I think that, that experience that Councilmember Troutman just shared is, it's interesting. You know, I didn't move to Richfield until after college, but I do remember going to a party in, in the North Loop in Minneapolis. And somebody, we were asking what people were doing and I said I'd moved to Richfield. And one of my acquaintances was like, oh, why? And I was, you know, I felt I had to defend myself. I was pretty, pretty pissed off in the moment. Um, and you know, I, I do find even, but since then, that was two thousand twelve, that attitude has changed. Um, and I, I want to see that continue to change. I, I think being regionally recognized and desired is important to me. And I think it's also interesting to compare that with what Councilmember Boylan shared. That I think for a lot of suburbs, there's been only one path to that, which is excluding people, making housing more expensive, making it more exclusive, getting higher end businesses. And I think we can show that we can achieve desirability in a different way, in a way that celebrates, you know, what, what we do and what's unique about us. But continues to grow and isn't just about being the lowest common denominator.
I guess the word that came to mind was opportunity. So whatever your dream is, you have the opportunity to achieve that dream. So that the doors are open and there's not roadblocks in the way. So however you want to find your health and happiness in your dream, there's that opportunity there. Kind of fits with what Ben was saying.
No, they all seem to, honestly, in many ways, they all seem to be interconnected in a lot of ways. So second to last one before we, oh, go, no, go for it.
I just wanted to, to jump in and just say one thing, that I just really, in the last decade. I've, I've seen Richfield come into its own in a lot of ways. And I feel like I, with, with my last comment, I would, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, there's just been a change, even since I've been on the council. Just observing amongst staff and electeds, like there's a standing up that Richfield's done. And we, we are like, we're, whatever we are, we're kind of coming into our own in this season of our city's life cycle. And so kind of building on that, I think is, it's not like it's like we're starting from zero. We're starting from like a momentum that's been building for a lot of years.
Well, if you don't mind me following up, where, where do you envision that momentum taking us? Or would you like to see, you know, where it's easier, we, once you start going, you know, to kind of keep going? Where's, where would you like to see that momentum take us?
I'd, I'd like to see us uh, grow in the area of creativity and the arts. And rem, and eve, I, I would say remain, you know, in some ways, I think in the kind of program that makes, makes buying a home feasible in Richfield. Makes renting affordable in Richfield, that this is a place where people are prospering. But I had a conversation with somebody in a near suburb that shall remain anonymous, talking about how she really wanted to lower. The asking price of her home, two hundred thousand dollars. So at one point, one million dollars, it would be affordable for a young family, without a hint of irony. Like this was like her, like, this is, this is like the goal in the conversations that, uh, that she was having. And I don't, I don't aspire that as our, the vision for Richfield. Like if we could, there are things we could do, I think, to move in that direction. I don't think we are. But I think being a place for people, we, we've always been a working class city where people come. And they're not independently wealthy, but to be prosperous is different than being, being wealthy. And, and to be known for, for our creativity and known for our community, I think is, it's like what I would want our brand to be.
Absolutely. Prosperity, as you said, prosperity has a lot of different definitions. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add on to that in regards to, you know, Richfield has this momentum with, you know, a lot of the. Newer programs it's created or initiatives it's undertaken, where they would like to see kind of that, you know, if you could say, hey, let's focus our. This great momentum and the support from our community, you know, where they would like to see that go?
I think I would add, again, in the category of challenges that are not unique to us. But I would add that as we have become a more diverse, multicultural, multiracial community. I think we're still fairly um, segregated, basically. That we, I mean, when I was, um, when I was working at the church in town. We talked with a bunch of neighbors about like, what do you love about Richfield? And the overlap between people who said they moved here because it's diverse. But also, all of their friends are still in the same like demographic as they are. Was really high. And so I, I mean, some of that is uh, human nature and tendency. But that, I think there's also, I mean, we, we talked about in the, the community survey, that there's still. And some of the focus groups um, with Latino community, that they don't feel some city services are for them. And that um, so I think there's like real opportunity there, but also real growth that, that needs to happen.
Um, there is one component that I forgot that I think is so important and I worry a lot about. Um, and that is just hoping and working towards building a super vibrant and active civic and resident. Infrastructure around leadership and civic engagement. That concept of community builders, you know, that um, Edwina had talked about with her award. But people with the spirit of working across difference um, with their neighbors to build solutions and, and come up with ideas. I think um, in Richfielded, but in, in all communities, in a lot of communities, that civic kind of infrastructure is breaking down. And we need a vibrant civic um, leadership in order to make any of this happen. And so that's one thing that I hope we have in thirty years, is a super strong civically engaged population.
So as all of you've seen in the past, you know, uh, we've been named, you know, we've, we've kind of got these larger accolades. Not just like one thing we did, but like more of a culmination of a lot of departments working together to, you know, create um, these things that we're more known for. Couple of years ago, we were known as the best suburb. Uh, for several years in a row, we had the hottest housing, you know, with like the hottest, most affordable, like, you know, best housing market um, to buy a home in. You know, in a decade from now, you know, what, what do you hope that they're doing, you know, a story on in the Star Tribune or on, you know, K eleven? Um, that, you know, hey, it's not just that one very specific thing. It's like, hey, what's this larger thing that Richfield's just doing right, that it's becoming more and more known for? And there's no wrong answers. So give me anything you guys think you, you'd be super proud about.
Um, it's kind of specific, but I would be proud if we were approaching or heading, heading in the direction of, of reaching the population we once had. I think it's a story of a lot of communities of having just lost a lot of people and that has a lot of negative consequences. So if I saw in thirty years that Richfield was back to fifty thousand residents, I personally would be really excited.
And if I can ask, what, why? Why would that?
Because I think more people, people do good in the community, people are good for Richfield, Richfielders are good for Richfield. Some of it's logistics, we just have fewer people carrying the burden and the cost of, of having a city. But I think the more people we have here, the more vibrant it can be.
I think it'd be really cool if our homeownership rates could mirror our population demographics. So it's not predictable whether somebody's gonna live in a apartment or live in a house based on their race. I think it'd be really cool if we could have, just have it mirror our population.
Going along the lines of some of the other comments, um, I had, I think just being an incubator for really innovative approaches and solutions. Um, and ideas, whether it's around different types of, of housing that are affordable and accessible to anybody. And just having um, housing options for folks that maybe are unique. Or we're kind of the testing ground for all kinds of developments. And, and different innovative things, whether it's in education and housing. Um, I think of, you know, entrepreneurs and small businesses do a lot of that work. I still hope to one day um, be home of the first and only Tibetan business district in the country. I think Richfield would be a great place to have that here, um, given the community we have in our, here in Richfield and in the interest. But I think those type of ideas were just kind of like the incubator for all of these innovative ideas across a community.
For sure, for sure.
I would um, echo in a general sense, both the, like, addressing any given disparity. And the, the innovative piece, I think the other thing I think of, um, which I, I don't believe is an award that exists. But like a, just like a good government award, like a, I don't know, like the process that I think we. Have been making a bunch of improvements to, um, it relates to our goals around community engagement. But just continuing to live into and build on this, this ability that we have for residents. To get engaged and make a difference and that we can just continue to like streamline that, uh, welcome that. Make more opportunities for that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to put words around exactly what, what my, what my, what my dreams are. Which is a good indication, you've not quite grasped exactly what that, what that is. But when I, 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 there's just a, a public spirit of disengagement. Of, oh, well, well, blank it, whatever it is. And it, it usually involves like some civic institution that's not performing in the way that you expect it to. And um, you know, I've, I would love for Richfield to be known as a place where people invest in our community. Invest in Richfield and that certainly means in government, in respecting and cooperating with uh, public safety. And with the city and in our civil discord, that people, people just feel invested. Like this is, when they think of Richfield, they think of something that they both metaphorically and actually have, have ownership and a real stake in. I think that's, I'd love for us to be known for that and I think that would just pay dividends. I mean, I think it does, to the extent that we execute on that, it does. But the, we could buck a national trend. I think we do and we should continue that.
Absolutely. Well, the good news is, the aspirational stuff is done. We're gonna switch gears to mission, which is a little bit more straightforward, but I appreciate you guys did a fantastic job. Seriously, like, these are really tough questions. And the whole point of getting you to think and stuff is that we don't give you the questions ahead of time. So you can really kind of rack your brains and stuff like that, be a little less prepared and be much more um, reflexive in your responses. So we're gonna switch gears to mission here a little bit and we're just starting out once again with something really easy, not as an elected official, but just as a resident. Cause you all uh, obviously live here as elected officials, just think of one city service that you utilize recently.
What, our water?
Yep, there you go, water. Perfect one, perfect one. What, can you guys think of a different one? Anyone else?
The inspections division, cause we were remodeling your house.
Oh, perfect, perfect. Yeah, parks, absolutely. Transportation with the trails too, I guess. There you go. Sean or Simon?
I, I think something, not, not recently, but I'm always uh, impressed and overwhelmed by our um, our, our uh, snow removal. That, that, that happens like clockwork and like a city, I've never, I've never lived in another city that every night, whenever there's, I always know we'll be able to get to work.
Um, I can't think of people interacting services off the top of my head, but certainly ones that have been mentioned using our roads and trails for a bike ride.
No, those are, those are all great, you know, easy, quick examples. Now, at the same time, you know, you also interact with residences at all the time as well. You know, what's uh, what would you say is the number one thing that residents contact you? What service or what, you know, not like an issue necessarily you're going, but like something that's offered by the city.
Like why they contact or what is the issue?
Yep. Not necessarily an issue, but what will you comment on or questions on or what, what kind of area or topic or service?
I think public works and recreation services are big ones.
Anything in particular that stands out?
A lot of comments on our recreation programming or the quality of our parks. People really care about like our, our trees and um, issues around trees, traffic, stop signs. Speeding, you know, um, bike routes, conditions, um, traffic conditions.
I know the mayor hit a lot of them, but what are some other things that council gets contacted about?
Um, I think it's partially because we uh, send out postcards purposely for them. But development um, is a big one. Um, people with comments or questions about what um, development proposals or zoning changes. Mean or will look like or providing their feedback.
I, I wouldn't say this is they were contacting me, but like on social media, people talk about like the MT service. Or getting help if they have a fender bender and all the public safety stuff.
Oh, for sure, for sure.
Yeah, I, one, one thing, you know, it's still, it's still true, the universal response when I talk to people about Richfield. They just spontaneously say, I love Richfield. And it's, it's worth noting the frictionless existence that so many residents have in Richfield that just goes unnoticed, where I just live my life. And it's, it's worth noting the frictionless existence that so many residents have in Richfield that just goes unnoticed where I just live my life and I don't. It's the place where I live, but I don't actually spend a lot of time thinking about how I live that way, which is like missional success, I think in a lot of ways.
No, absolutely.
And then, and then, of course, in, you, you, garbage hauling and public safety are like two areas that people contact when they have like. Thoughts or ideas or expressions, you know, that, that come, because that's, that's like a, a, a point of friction where they're like, oh, now I've. Interacted with the government in a way that.
Yeah.
I wasn't expecting to or wanting to.
Yeah, especially with those two issues being as popular as they are right now as well.
I think um, it's not, I guess it's not that positive unfortunately, but it's um, one of the most common things I get is just neighbor complaints. Which is also really hard because there's rarely anything I can do for them. So I mean, if department wise, it usually falls to public safety or community development. If there's anything that can be done, but that unfortunate the result of people not knowing or not getting along with their neighbors does come to, I imagine to all of us of that. And it's, it's hard when it is a really bad situation and there's just not much we can do to help.
You could uh, you know, trim some, trim some grass for your neighbors maybe, right? Maybe trespassing too, but don't, that's why, that's why I'm not here for public safety related stuff. Um, and why Jay doesn't want me to be there. That's all right, no, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Um, so, you know, on a day to day basis, I know we have our core values, but you know, priorities and core values. Are a little bit different, um, depending on what department you work for or, you know, what projects in front of you. Um, you know, more abstractly, you know, what do you think that the organization's day to day priority should be? Can you think of some?
Well, I, I think of quality service. I mean, and it's like Simon was saying, people kind of take it for granted. They assume that it's gonna be good.
I guess I would just echo that um, delivery of core services within, with um, a level of this exceptional quality. And then the other thing I think about is how we do that, we deliver that, and I think of the spirit of doing it in public service. I think about the focus on, on equity as well.
Absolutely.
I'm thinking about, and I'm trying to think of how to phrase it, but just like. Um, sometimes it's literally just like enabling people's everyday lives with the basics of like water and streets and that kind of thing. But also then like enhancing people's lives of like providing parks and programs and um, and things. So something about um, just that if our, if our ultimate like aspirational goal is that. People can thrive and removing the different barriers that they have that I think are absolutely the like quality service. Is the more day to day what that looks like, but then, yeah, that being a vehicle for. Um, enabling and enhancing people's everyday lives.
Absolutely.
And I know this is, this uh, maybe isn't perfect, perfect for a, a public, a public municipal setting, but every day. I send my kids out and, and I pray for them and I tell them, do your best and be a blessing. And that's like, that's like all I have, like, that's like all, all, all you have, you know, and, and not in like a theological sense, but just in the sense that it's like. All you have is the best you can do and to leave people better. And, and then like that, if you did that, you're, you're, you're okay. And if you didn't do that, well, then you probably should do that.
After seventeen years of parochial school, I get it. What do you think, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary? Can you think of a priority that, you know, maybe we're doing right? Or maybe that you think that we should aspire to or something like that on our day to day basis as an organization?
I don't, I don't have more to add than what's been said, but I agree with what's been said.
Perfect, perfect.
Can I add?
No, go for it.
The quality service thing. Also, when you were talking about thriving, I think it's like so that you can hear the kids laughing in the parks or the arts. Or just things that are bringing out the joy beyond just the survival.
So that next level, almost like, you know, the, the mental survival or the, yeah, the, the, that next level of, of uh, of thriving almost. To use your own, your, you know, the group's words. So in many ways, you know, you guys kind of, oh, go for it.
I just, sorry, it's just as I.
No, no, go, absolutely, this what's for.
Just kind of building on the, on, on a comment that I made earlier, like one of the, one of the goals that we always can be, we're always moving up and down. And sometimes we have control over things, sometimes we don't. It's, you, conf- confidence in, in our institutions. That all around, like there's just, we're constantly being checked and our, and people just don't believe an, anything. Uh, anytime somebody interacts with any part of the government and they're like, that was better than I thought it was, or I didn't trust and now I trust. Like, that's like, it's like precious. Those are like ju- jewels in civil service, and I think we collect a lot of those. Um, and we should, I, I would just say that would be always an aspirational goal to leave people trusting. Government and institutions more than they did than when they contacted us.
Absolutely. It was, it was a great segue actually to my next question is, you know, uh, as council members, you're all kind of in the, in the, absolutely in the customer service. Kind of call center, I mean, a lot of times actually both literally and figuratively, um, and we're in the same, you know, as, as directors, as managers. Um, as city employees, we're also in the customer service business of, um, you know, wanting to have those um, positive, you know, those interactions with residents. What would you hope, or, you know, day in, day out, the resident takeaway with those interactions with city staff or yourself are? In regards to, you know, city services or needs or questions or anything like that, what's the, what's the takeaway you hope that, you know, everyone or most people have?
I think at the core that they were heard, that somebody heard what they had to say.
I would say um, that people walk away feeling, wow, my government and the leaders that serve my community really do care about me and our community. And they're, I'm in, except in, in great hands with them.
Um, just to add, I mean, heard, but I think like mutually understood, which is helpful, so that not only do they feel like their words are coming to us. But especially when we're talking about a policy change or issue that they're, they understand where we're coming from and we're not just nodding and then ignoring them, you know?
For sure, for sure.
I always hope for a, a level of um, improved civic engagement or education from our residents. Like now they know a little bit more about what our government does, how we serve them, who to contact, who to talk to next time, but building that connection. So that they are empowered um, to make a difference in their community.
I would say that even if when they first reach out, they feel like it's. A like me versus them sort of situation that they leave. Um, I mean, similar to what, what was said of that trust, but just a sense of like we and a sense of the bigger picture. That they are a part of, um, and that like even if they reach out with a specific thing. And the answer is no, or not yet, or whatever it may be, that if it's not immediately what they wanted. That that is connected to a bigger picture of the vision that helps the whole community thrive.
Yeah, definitely give me that context. As soon as we talked about it earlier, I, you know, you've talked to a lot of new residents as well. Based on your feedback from them, why do people choose Richfield to move here?
They couldn't afford South Minneapolis.
It's prob- probably like the number one reason.
No, that work, no, that works, that's, that's, that works. What other reasons?
Location.
I think their connection, whether it's through their family that, where they grew up, um, or some type of tie, a lot of people are, live here. Um, it's almost like it gets passed down through the generations. I, I know a lot of people that their kids, you know, they grew up here and they wanna stay here. A lot of stories like that. Um, also, I hear that it, and I know that it has the best of everything. It literally is just this amazing hidden gem in many ways. It has everything you could want. And I think it fits that profile of the urban hometown where you get both the small town community feel with the urban amenities. And it's kind of all in one place and people love that.
Oh, I think the, the right home at the, the right price, which might be the softer version of what Councilman Troutman said. Um, no, it was actually interesting. I was talking with a Realtor today about that and I actually asked him, is that the reason why, what you hear from your clients? And some of the time that was the answer, but there was one like just specific example of like people went to the Target in Richfield. And then they were just like aware of it because they were always going to Target and they're like, oh, it'd be nice to be close to that Target. And that sounds like such a silly reason to pick a house. But I think that stuff of having that experience, another person I know like grew up in South Minneapolis, but always went to the Richfield pool. And so it was just like aware of Richfield as a community because of those. They're basically, their first interaction is not buying a house or being a, a resident here. It's something else, whether they're, you know, coming for our parks, coming for uh, retail. Um, and they've learned that the community is attractive and convenient.
Then I guess the next step is, I know that it was talking about a while ago, is why do they stay? You know, I know I think most people have the opportunity, um, as Councilmember Troutman said of buying that, you know, affordable, you know, finger quotes. Uh, you know, one point one million dollar house, but at the same time, you know, Richfield has a lot of ramblers. Sometimes if you have a family, you have to make sacrifices. Um, because, you know, those houses don't fit the same as maybe, you know, houses two, three, four suburb rings out. Where, you know, you have the more bedrooms or something like that. And a lot of people do make that decision to make those sacrifices. Because, you know, of their, you know, with their connection to this community. Um, so what have you heard from folks that, you know? Uh, maybe moved here to teach, you know, decades ago and decided to stick around as opposed to heading to South Minneapolis or Dinah or Hopkins or something like that.
I can tell you what middle school kids talk about. They say you don't have to watch your back. You can just be who you are and you're, can be safe. And you don't have to, like, I had some kids that were biracial and they said, if I go to my dad's neighborhood. I'm not black enough and I go to my mom's neighborhood, I'm not white enough, but if I stay here in Richfield, this is like home and I'm safe. And I like it here and I don't have to watch my back.
And I'll just say that's not the experience that I heard from, from my friends when I grew up in Richfield. So that's.
Oh, interesting.
That's really great, probably, that's just like makes me wanna cry. I know it's not perfect, but that's like a, that's great that, that um, your students would say that. Makes me deeply happy.
Everyone else, why, why have you heard people decide to say they stay here as opposed to, you know, potentially seeking a different community to buy their second house? Or, or even, you know, their apartment or townhouse to, you know, house type situation?
I think I've heard several comments along the lines of what Mary just said, but where a lot of immigrant families or multiracial families feel very safe here. They also feel like they have access to everything they need. It's close to work. Um, it's affordable. It's their families here. Um, I also have talked to kind of multi-generational Richfield families who wanna stay here. Who wanna live close to their parents, want, are, they're building their community here. And then I also talked to people of my generation where, you know, I'm not, there's so many. Different generations, younger generations that whether it's because we're, with school debt because of. Um, wages that people get because of all different types of circumstances. The goal is not necessarily to have a big, big expensive fancy house out far away and commute. But really being close to home, building that sense of community, having access to a diverse vibrant community. Um, that's walkable, where there's a lot of parks. And so kind of what prosperity looks like to some people. Is what Richfield has to offer in spades and for everything they, they are looking for.
Um, I don't, I don't know that I have enough generalizable trends to share, but I was thinking of one conversation I had with somebody who was. Who has lived in Richfield for ten years, was looking for a new house, trying to figure out what he wanted and if there was a house that could meet his needs. And was reluctant to leave Richfield, but possibly was going to. And, you know, from him, it was, there was a specific program available at the schools that was important to him. That was really valuable to his family and he did not wanna leave that. Uh, I would say the sense of community and from his perspective, at least the sense of humility. It was a little bit different than um, what Councilmember Supple shared, but just feeling that like his house budget would allow him to move to a Dina if he wanted to. But like feeling like he has to put on certain errors to do that or just act a certain way and not feeling that pressure here.
That makes a lot of sense, makes a lot of sense.
The, yeah, the word that comes to mind for me is, is fit. Like, Richfield just fits for a bunch of people. And when you find a place that fits, you're like, why, why, why would I, why would I, like, what? There's just like a deep, like, there's like a satisfaction or like a coming into place, which you hope for everybody. I know that's not everybody and people don't like it. I suppose they leave. But I think for people that long endure, that it's the right chemistry of location and community. And, and affordability and, and even though I said what I said kind of tongue in cheek about affordability. When you look around us, um, in Bloomington, any, certainly any Dinah and even in South Minneapolis. You start half, you're, uh, outside of like a little pocket in East Bloomington, you have to drive a really long way. To find something that's comparable uh, to, to Richfield.
I think the only thing I wanna add that's similar to that point is just that, um. Where you live, um. Had that being a choice is like a luxury, um, that you only have, but if you have certain income levels. Um, and that staying in many ways is a direct function of the. Affordability of our housing, of the, the programs we create to make, like the kids at home that was mentioned. The, um, a, a whole bunch of different things that like make this the place people can stay. Um, and that, that stability, especially at the lowest income ranges. Uh, just anywhere that you can stay is the place you want to stay. Um, and so just, I think there's a whole bunch of like aspirational or like higher level reasons. That people who have choice still choose to stay, but just wanna name that piece too, that it's not. Not every family has like an abstract thought process of like, where do I want to live? I'm going to go move there.
No, abs- that is, it's very, very true. All right, um, and we're almost done, but uh, can you think of something that makes our organization unique?
I'll say this, over the last twenty years, when I look around the metro. Um, Richfield has a history of strong women leaders, whether you look at the city council or the school board or the city staff. There's a lot of really strong female leaders.
Very, very true. The rest of you, what makes this organization unique?
I definitely do think about our staff and our directors specifically, um, not just our directors. Our other staff as well, but I think our director team has been together mostly for a really long time, working together. They have a long history and strong connection here in Richfield. Um, and have had built, you know, have built community here in Richfield in many different ways. Um, but there's that strong cohesion and team amongst our directors. And I think there's kind of a seamless working together that has come from that and continuity. And then I think about our staff. Also, we have a lot of staff that live here, that were raised here, that go to their parents' house for lunch here in Richfield. Um, like, Richfield is in our blood in so many ways, but that's very uh, specific to our staff. And I think about that a lot. I don't know if that's the case in other cities, because I just don't know, but I don't think it's probably like how we have it here in our city.
Um, I would say at least from the council, but it's probably from the, the interactions with staff too, is that I think we're very consensus driven in a way that cities are often not. Uh, the city I grew up in once had an incident that got so far gone that the mayor had an office at City Hall and the city council had voted to like revoke his key. Or something and like, I can't imagine anything less rich field than something like that happening, uh, getting into such a sort of toxic cycle there. So, um, obviously diversity of thought is important, but I do like that there aren't a lot of fireworks.
Um, it's been said before, but I, I just wanna highlight again the, the sense of identity and ownership. And like responsibility for who Richfield is, that the, like, yes, in this room. But also the broader community has, um, especially having lived in Minneapolis. Like, people are consumers of Minneapolis more than, like, I don't know too many people who, um. Maybe it was my, my own circles, but who like really felt ownership of like, I make Minneapolis what it is. In the way that nearly any Richfield resident seems to, to own and to, to like intuitively feel. That like. Any Richfield resident seems to, to own and to, to like intuitively feel that like. Our community is a group project that we all contribute to.
Would you say that's the same as well for staff?
I, I would, this is maybe not exactly what you're, but one of the things that are unique about Richfield is our small size. We are geographically small, especially comparative to our neighbors, you know, and it's, it's, I think it gives us some. Some challenges, but it also creates some real dynamic opportunities to. Even though change is hard, we can change quicker and be more dynamic than a city like. Uh, like Bloomington or even Saint Louis Park or Bloomington can, um, because of our size and. Makes me all the more proud when we stand up and we are a regional leader and I think we are in a lot of ways.
Absolutely. And my last, my last question, um, you know, kind of similar to how we started, we're kind of, you know. Maybe one thing or one phrase or something like that, uh, you know, Tesla is in the business of making, you know, electric cars. Uh, Blue Bunny in my hometown is, uh, they're in the business of making ice cream, you know. Uh, Apple is in the, in the business of making, you know, technology and computers. If you had to say Richfield, the organization, our organization, two hundred plus, uh, individuals, uh, what business is the city of Richfield in?
I would say creating community.
I think providing an exceptional quality of life.
I think I'd circle back to some of the phrasing of I said before about this, like, enabling and enhancing life.
Um, yeah, similar to Councilmember Royal and sort of, um, yeah, empowering residents to sort of be successful and, and improve themselves.
I'm with Councilmember Supple. I like it. Honestly, maybe I should, should ask that question, mash them all together and you got a mission statement ready to go.
I wanted to add one. I think it was brought up previously, but that sense of home in like. Uh, in the business of creating that sense of home, whether it's for a business, an entrepreneur, a new family, a senior, a single person, just. We're in the business of creating that, um, helping you create that home here in Richfield. So it's more about, you know, there's the quality of life, but the sense of home is about the connection to others and community.
Well, thank you so much. Um, so I'll let you know the next steps. So what I will have to do, um, working with everyone else, I'm gonna talk with. You know, the directors, we're also gonna talk with, uh, other staff as well to try and develop these, you know, kind of feelings, thoughts, aspirations and then. I'm gonna try to do my best to throw them all together. I'll come back with you with some draft possibilities. Um, in uh, September-ish, I believe is kind of what we're shooting for. Um, and then we can, you know, either workshop it or let me know your thoughts of them on the right track, wrong track, something like that. Um, and then we'll have that to, uh, guide our organization as well as our strategic planning process moving forward, so. With that, thank you so much. If you can ever think of anything else, have any ideas or anything, I was thinking I should sit down and talk to anyone in particular, um, feel free to let me know. And with that, city manager, I said six fifteen, and we are six fifteen on the dot.
Thank you.
Need that and I need the clicker.
Good job, Neil.
Thanks, Neil. So, thank you. I, um, but I really enjoyed the conversation. I get to talk with each of you. Um, and I, I love that sense of creating community and that strong sense of identity and I hear that from staff. And from council members and also pride in, in community, which is nice. So, uh, we're moving our way down the pyramid. Um, core values still largely council-driven, but certainly we are trying to embed them throughout the organization. These were developed in twenty eighteen. We made some small changes in twenty nineteen. Uh, ideally values should endure for about five years, so we could update them. Um, headed in, headed, heading into the strategic plan or during that process. Um, I just wanted to, based on working here for a while now, I wanted to ask some questions about it and. Uh, take your temperature on whether you wanted to do that or not. I, I, I still think these buckets. Are right. I hear this from council and from staff. Um, but we really want to embed these throughout the organization. We want them to be memorable. We want people to be able to, to list them. And I'm not sure if I turn this off and asked you all to list all six of them, could you do it? Um, so is six too much? Is there a possibility to combine some of these? Um, are the titles correct? Do the titles match the text? And so I'll ask some questions and then I'll open it up for you all to discuss. I'm wondering if responsive and community center, is there some overlap there? Is there any? Any interest in potentially combining those? Also with, uh, equitable and celebrating diversity, um, is equitable. I mean, I talked to our equity administrator earlier today and, um, is equitable the overall. Title for that and then celebrating diversity is certainly part of it because creating an inclusive environment requires you to have equity. Um, so those are just, uh, I'd like to talk about those first and then I'll talk about titles. So is there any appetite to update these? What are your thoughts? Is there a possibility to combine those? And right now I'm just looking for input and we would bring them back to you, similar to what we're gonna do with mission and vision.
I think generally I see kind of four buckets and there is overlap, so I think, um, I think it was. Lead the way and I, and it's more about the concepts and we don't have to spend time here, but it's probably like leading and innovating, something around that. What is the concept? The second one is, um, bucketing responsible and community-centered. And then the third, um. Is, oh, you know, maybe it's, um, some type of stewardship or. Not just fiscal stewardship, but there could be responsibility or, or some type of stewardship idea and then equity.
Um, I just wanna say I really like the idea of broadening fis- fiscally responsible, like, that means different things to different people and I don't know if that means, like. We want the cheapest possible thing, lowest tax, that's a priority, cuz that's certainly the way some people would read that term. Other people could mean just like, don't be wasteful, which I hope is a value. Um, so I like the idea of it being like larger stewardship of what's important to our community, um, including the public's money.
I wonder, cuz I had a similar thought, if I was like. Deciding where I wanted to move and looked at a city's website, I would think like, okay, the people who made this like, don't wanna raise taxes. And that's like so important that it's listed up there with equity and I just don't. Feel, like, obviously I don't want us to run our finances into the ground, but I wonder if. Given the recent focus on environmental sustainability, if like sustainable. Uh, some, I don't know if that can be like looped in or if something around like. Quality services can be looped in since that clearly has been a key theme, but I. I agree with fiscally responsible not being the title and then I think responsive and community-centered being combined makes sense. And diversity and equity being combined makes sense. Um, my main thought, and this may come up later too. Um, is just, I, I want to make sure I know like a, initial steps of the equity work. Are focused on like our own services and making sure they're provide, like as it's phrased here. That they're provided well to all residents, but I really. Hopefully quickly would like our equity work to get into like. Addressing, sort of taking responsibility for the things that are not directly ours. And the like inequities that exist that we can't overtly point to and be like, oh, we caused this by this thing we're currently doing. But that that still needs to be fixed for our community to be whole. Um, so I, I wanna make sure that that piece gets in there and I think the last sentence under equity starts to get to that. Um, by like focusing on areas of need, but I want to make, I, I guess I would like to see that. Strengthened and whether it fits in a two-sentence description here or if it's in, I think the following slides get into more detail. But to make sure that that is part of the equity work.
Thanks. I, I know that the two buckets in my, in my mind, when I think about the city are equity and prosperity. And when I, when I think, and when I'm evaluating things personally, those are the two things that it's like, well, this, will this lead to flourishing and prospering or will it not? And is it equitable? And under that, you know, diverse, and maybe like. Substituting the inclusion for diversity might be something to think, you know, just I think the spirit of what we're doing is clear, but. Making sure that our nomenclature reflects what we're, what we're trying to say, um, and you, and, and then. Fiscal responsibility and leading the way, I think also, you know, words like, words like flourishing. Or, or prospering, so it's not just, you, the, mi- might be a little more specific, but I could. Whether, and whether those are even the two words, I could see kind of two bigger values that would then make space for things that are more. Discrete like justice, sustainability, those things that would, that's just a, a thought.
So, if you read the text of fiscally responsible, and it used to be actually accountable. It does talk about resources, so I think I'm hearing from you that. Because it's not just about fiscal resources, it's about human resources, it's about physical resources, natural resources. That broadening that would be important. Yes?
I like the stewardship idea because that it was, it's very broad. And it gets into both sustainability and trying to be accountable and trying to be responsible. When I first was reading through these at home a couple days ago, I wrote down equity, resident voices and quality services. So, I think that. The responsiveness is really, really important, so I don't wanna lose that if we combine it to make sure that that's there.
And then another question on titles. The lead the way, if you read the text on that. It talks more about having this mindset of learning and continuously improving, not necessarily being the first one. To do something. And I, I actually think, um, when the mayor spoke before about being an incubator and trying new things. I, I still, I'm not sure if that's leading the way or learning the way and wanted to explore that with you.
For me, I think the interest is not to lead the way, like very, uh, literally, maybe. But to innovate, to adapt, to be nimble, um, to be responsive, to be creative. So those are the ideas, um, that I think of. That's kind of separate, sometimes overlaps with leading, but not necessarily.
I, yeah, I think similar to that thought, I'm just thinking of there's, um. Some church groups and also like, uh, a mental health movement that like have adopted the semicolon as their like logo. That like, it's not done yet, it's still in, in process, um. And I think that's the, the idea that I, I see when I, or what I would like to see in our, our core values.
So would that fall under continuous improvement, like always striving to be better?
Yeah, I, and I, and I think the text under lead the way is that, um, but. Yeah, to me that fa- all falls in that same bucket. And again, we don't, we're not gonna wordsmith it tonight, but I'm. I, I'm hearing from you all, there might be some tweaks that we can make and we can bring that back to you. Is there anything else on core values? Anything from, from staff on core values? Okay, so we'll move on to the goals and objectives. Um, if this presentation looks familiar, it's because you've seen it for. This'll be your third time. Um, of course, we wanted to get to strategic planning before, but the pandemic had other ideas. And we had to defer it a couple times. Um. Even now, we've got it all scheduled, which I'm very excited about to, to do that with this group. But it is not gonna get done in time to inform our current budget that we're working on, which is for twenty twenty-two. And, uh, we need direction, staff needs direction on that to make sure we're headed, we are putting out together the budgets. Um, well, and, and, um, consistent with these goals and objectives. So it would be helpful to hear from you all on the goals and if there, there's still priorities. Also, if there are any priorities among the goals that are higher than others, we heard that last year. Um, so if you're okay with that approach, I'll go ahead and I'll go through the goals and the objectives and get your feedback on it. Um, but again, we are doing a pretty intense process with strategic planning. And these will not be with us for a super long time, but we do need something going into the budget and putting together our action steps. And then I'll, I'll end with our action steps, which again are developed by staff. Those are the means to the ends that you're giving us. Um, but we do wanna make sure that we're on the right track and also get any questions answered on those. Um, so. So, infrastructure, um, is that, is that still a priority? How does it, how does it weigh in compared to the other goals? Are these the right objectives?
Um, city manager, before we go through individual ones, I wanna throw out just a question for people to think about. As we're going through them is where would the arts fit into this? Cuz they're not mentioned and so we don't need, I don't need an answer right now, but just keep that in the back of your mind as you're looking at them.
And could you go back just to do a quick recap of looking at them all? Okay, infrastructure development, equity, housing, community engagement, question was this, thank you.
If I could ask one other general question, just could you, and like having not been through the budget process before, how would you use this feedback? Like in terms of a budget, so if we said infrastructure isn't that important anymore, like how would that inform what you propose as the budget? I'm not saying that, but just.
Kristen's heart stopped. Um, so as we go through the budget, we will pull out of the budget like we did last year. These tough decisions that you're gonna have to make through the budgeting process and you're gonna have to choose. So for example, we are planning on sixty-fifth street and doing that, uh, next year. And then that levy is gonna have a pretty serious impact on our, on our, our operating levy for twenty twenty-three. So if infrastructure is not as much of a value and say, um, development is, then. Uh, then, then John gets a new, new staff person to help on economic development and we don't go ahead with sixty, sixty-fifth street. So that is what it's helping staff pull those out for council feedback during the budget process. But it's also helping us put together those action steps and making sure that we're on the right, we're on the right path.
Okay, that's. Yes, thank you.
Good to go on.
I guess, can I just, as they're all up there, one comment. I don't think this is a prioritizing, but I guess I would say, um. For me, the equity and community engagement, uh, and to a lesser extent, housing. Feels more like we are breaking new ground, um, whereas the other, like certainly core services. Infrastructure and even development, um, certainly are important and we have some big things to be doing. Um, or lots of little things to keep doing consistently, um, but I guess I don't. And maybe this is some of the like staff council breakdown, that I don't see myself spending as much time in those. Just because it. It is more of the ongoing things than the like big council decisions.
Yeah, and I think that's a, it's a good point, right? Um, and we talked about this early on because we didn't originally have core services as part of the goals. But when you get to the budget and you get to the action steps, so much of our focus is, is. Delivering those core services is so fundamental to quality of life. I mean, we talked about creating community and quality of life for your mission and vision. If folks don't have good water, if folks can't drive to their jobs, if they don't feel safe, then they don't have good quality of life. So it might not be the project that you're talking about, it might not be the project that, um. Falls on the, the other goals, but there, it's so fundamental to what we do. Plus, there's, there are internal things that support of all those goals. It, I mean, that's, it's Pam's department, you know, administrative services. So making sure that we have the talent to deliver on those, those other goals is really important. Making sure that Chris puts together budgets and we're financially sound, that is, that, that is. Key to delivering on those other, um, goals that you've talked about in those values. So I, I support keeping it as a goal. I appreciate what you're saying in that it's not like the specific new initiative that you're putting forward. But it's so fundamental to what we're putting together in our budgets and our action steps.
Yes, and to clarify, I was not saying any of those should be like forgotten. Yes, and to clarify, I was not saying any of those should be like forgotten about or taken off, but just that I think more, for me personally, more of my, I don't know, energy, creative thought is not going to be living there.
Yes. I understand. And we talked about it a bit in that the action stuff, some of the things would be ongoing because it is a lot of our time. But it's not a new initiative, so it's not like we're going to take it off the next year as completed. And, and when I was putting it together, there were some conversations like, do we leave it on or not? But you know, part of this is communicating to you all, like what it takes to, to deliver on that mission and vision and values that you're asking us to do.
That's good. All I hear is Sean doesn't want to do infrastructure and Ben doesn't want core services.
So are we good to move on? So, uh, infrastructure, again, is this still a goal? And again, that we're focused on 2022 and the budget process and those action steps. How does it stack up against the other goals?
So I'm wondering, does it also include the internal infrastructure? Like pro, for the processes we have, like succession planning and cross training and risk management to make sure like our IT is there and that everything is set, you know, the internal infrastructure. Cause when I first read through this, it all seemed to talk about external, but I think we gotta remember internal too.
I think that's a really good point, and I don't think the objectives are written to include that.
Mary, I think that's an excellent point and that's something in my day-to-day work that I think about is you can't accomplish any equity or engagement work or really anything transforming the way we do business just in general without an internal infrastructure to put it in place. Otherwise you're just constantly, it takes up a lot of bandwidth capacity. It often is done in reactivity. So in order, I, I think the internal infrastructure is huge.
Just to be clear for my hypothetical, I do think infrastructure is a priority and I think it, other things build on it too. It's a, it's a core piece that allows us to have good development and other things.
If I can ask Director Asher a question, I guess my sense, and I am realizing I don't know what this is based in, so would prefer your more professional sense is that, I mean, long before I started, that the city has continued to prioritize this and that we are nearing a, a thankfully a place that many other cities are not in where a lot of our infrastructure needs have been addressed. But I'm also aware that like, some of that is just, we repaved nearly all of our streets and I can't see the stuff that's old. Would you, however you can answer this, like are we, how are we sitting in terms of our infrastructure? I know the national level, they talked about how like we're rated at like a C minus or something. Are we, are we in a relatively stable place and just have a few projects that are significant that will be coming up? Or I guess what's the urgency level around it?
Thank you, Councilmember Waylon for the question. So you are talking about roads, which is the surface and we are sitting pretty good there. We have some like 65th Streets in poor condition and others, it's going to be the underground infrastructure that drives it and we are overdue actually bringing an update on the resiliency plan for the underground infrastructure to the council. It's coming, I think, September, October timeframe. But I think we're, we have a good plan in place, but we do, you know, I'd say we're sitting pretty good. We're on top of it. Some communities don't know the condition of a lot of their infrastructure. We have a good plan in place for what we're doing. This goal of infrastructure, I think is important, obviously. But it came up as a goal because this was prior to all the infrastructure investment that we did accomplish in the last 10 or so years. And articulating the, it as a priority and getting out to, I mean, the Sweet Streets campaign to help share why it's important to Richfield with the community as part of it. And I also think this is a category where art should be noted because we do have a policy of including art in our structure projects as well. There's other questions?
Yes, thank you.
Any other comments? We can go on to the next, which is development. So I'm going to ask the same questions with these. Are they still a priority? Anything, any tweaks we need to make to those objectives? And how do they compare to the other goals? If there's something significantly you feel is much more of a priority heading into 22?
I have a question also directed for Director Asher, even though it's related to development. When I think of like the big ticket items that we have to pay for in the next generation, I think of, of public works items. Based on our current revenue, do you see us on a path to being able to afford those? Or are there things that we need to do to, to really ramp up development? Or ramp up development or aggressively raise taxes to pay for just maintaining the quality of life that people expect here? Does that make sense?
Well, I'm going to ask, thank you for the questions, Councilmember. Are you asking about the capacity of our infrastructure related to the development or?
No, and maybe this is a question for, for Director Regis or anybody else. What I'm asking is when I think like the numbers are so big in infrastructure that it's hard for me to appreciate like, oh, how many tens of millions of dollars? You know, MINDOT wants how many tens of millions of dollars in contribute where I just, I, I start to lose my sense of scale of that's affordable or not affordable. And my question is, when we, when we look down 10 years from now, 15 years from now, are we on a path where our infrastructure needs exceed our projected revenues? Or are they about on pace? Do we need to, and, and not to exclude Director Stark, maybe you have a vision for this too. I'm just trying to understand what, what do things look like in the next decade? Not that anybody knows for sure, but just your best guess.
So just real quick for John, we're looking at that as far as the, the underground utilities that I'm, you know, responsible for maintaining, you know, it's, it's different for the three. We got water, sewer and stormwater. But we're looking at that.
In terms of development as a revenue source?
Yes.
My opinion?
Please.
Is that it's, it's a cycle and you've always got to be working through the cycle. Uh, and it, it just never ends, you know, as soon as, you know, as soon as the Best Buy campus. You know, that's, that coming off of the TIFT rolls is really going to change a lot of how we, of the money we have and are able to do things. And so we continually have to be, I, I call it research and development, you know, putting money into development is, is akin to research and development for a big corporation. And it's, it's always paving the way for the future prosperity.
Yeah.
Chris, did you want to add anything?
Well, I was just thinking in response to Councilmember Troutman's question about if the revenues can meet the, the, the needs and things like that. And for a lot of the, the infrastructure projects, I mean, it usually boils down to issuing debt. And debt usually translates into, you know, taxes because with the debt is serviced by debt service tax levies and things like that. And that's always a tight rope that we have to walk. It is, you know, can we afford to issue that debt and can we afford to impose those taxes on the residents and things like that? That's always a very dicey thing to, to walk and things like that. In terms of, of like the utility infrastructure, a lot of that is paid by the utility funds. But again, that translates into the rates that we charge to help pay for that, help cover that cost, that operational cost. And again, that follows back down to the users of those, those services and stuff like that. So I guess, you know, in terms of like road infrastructure and projects like that, you know, the way we meet those costs or the revenues that meet that is through the issuance of debt. So I don't know if that answers your question or.
It, it, it doesn't, but I may, maybe it's because I'm not asking it clearly. When we look at our tax capacity in the next decade, do you think, do you feel like we're close to having the tax capacity we need to issue that debt and service that debt? Or do we need to look at, I mean, I, the question is, yes, we always need to be issuing development, but are we, are we looking at, we're looking at a, a real revenue shortfall that we don't know how we're going to overcome?
Well, tax capacity doesn't generate revenue. But tax capacity does, if the tax capacity is increasing and it should increase in the next five to six years. There's a lot of the development tax increment districts fall off and that turns into usable tax capacity. What that does is that spreads out, you know, the amount of, it increases the amount of tax capacity that's spread out in terms of our tax levies and things like that. It should hopefully translate into, I don't know, say less taxes, but maybe it'll mitigate moderate tax increases and things like that. It all depends too, I mean, on the individual properties, if individuals or properties, you know, see a large increase in value or something like that, really not much anybody can do on that. They're still, we're going to see an increase in their taxes. But if the tax capacity continues to increase and it has the last several years, you can see, you look at our tax capacity rate, it's actually decreased and now it's just kind of barely trickling upwards a little bit now. So it all boils down to, you know, how much that tax capacity increases i- in the next five years.
And I think maybe what I hear you asking is, do we need to keep growing the tax capacity?
The tax base.
The tax base. So do we need to keep incre- increasing the number of payers?
Yes.
So that the amount that each person is paying is sustainable.
And, and what I'm trying to ask, that's exactly what I'm asking and.
Highest spread then.
Yes, how, how healthy are we looking? Are we, are we in dire straits in a decade? Not now, I know now we're okay. Are we, how are we, how, like medium term, long term? How are we looking?
So like Chris just described.
Yeah.
Over the past few years, even though we have been improving our infrastructure, because we've been growing that tax base, the burden has been going down for individual taxpayers. So, so we're, that's good because it had been high compared to other cities. But it is, it's a bal- it's a balancing act and you issued a lot of debt to catch up on a lot of infrastructure. That starts rolling off in like 2029 or 2030 and then you'll be able to issue that debt to replace it. But so we've got this period right now that we have to be, we have to be making some tough choices. But you're still, again, because John's growing the tax base for us, just John all by himself. That, that burden for the individual taxpayer is continuing to go down. So that's very good news.
So I just want to do a time check. We have 15 minutes and we have four and a half more goals to go through. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm good to go on this one. And then if we want to also make sure, just to try to, do you want to just walk us through the rest of them? Is that the?
Sure.
Well, my question. Is that everything in four, in 15 minutes or you have more too?
Well, I also wanted to, to talk about action steps. We can, we could bring that back if you want. I just, again, I just want to make sure you're, you don't have concerns with them. You have, you don't have questions. Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Waylon.
Just super brief, on this point, I, maybe this was already the case, but just want to say my priority around development is much more focused in like specific areas and not just like generally pursuing development for development sake. But I think as much as we can target it is what I'm interested in.
So I also wanted to make one comment on this slide, which is there, the objectives are extremely customer service oriented. Like a business wants to come here, we want to be responsive to them, but I would also say like setting the policy precedent to be attractive to businesses and to allow new housing to be built. And I think that's a lot of the work. I understand that potentially could be on the work fun, work plan and need funding.
Thank you. And then equity, last year this was a priority among other goals. And we, we have focused on that in our budgeting and, and in our action steps. Based on conversations with you, I think that is still true, but I, I wanted to give you the chance to tell me otherwise or, or tell me more. Yes, Councilmember Waylon?
Um, I guess this is the specific slide where I was thinking that I would like to see an objective that is about addressing the existing disparities and needs and not just, I think the objectives here reflect the beginning steps of this work, but can hope we're starting to move past that.
Thank you.
Other folks, go ahead, go ahead. Councilmember Troutman.
Just, just really briefly, I, I'd say that, I mean, I think council's clear on, on the priority, but how we granularly implement that, I'm just thinking of, of projects about like I concretely addressing, like the, the things that come to mind, like in Parks and Rec, where it's like, well, we need infrastructure, but maybe we need buses to go to apartments that we have systemically like isolated from parks, right? To, to be able to, like, that's like, that's a lower cost, but it doesn't neatly fit. I, I've not talked to Director Markle. This is just like one illustration of an idea that said, well, that, that might not be seen as an efficient use of resources or translation services for commissioners. So we could have multilingual commissioners that we've never had before. Those are concrete investments that at a micro level feel really expensive. On a macro level, I think they will, I think they'll yield really big dividends, but if we don't articulate them, it'll be hard. So if, if every department can look with an equity lens, and I think we're doing that even more, that it's not a like core services, it's a core, core value.
Yes, and we have on, us, on our schedule, the bringing the equity plan for an update on, I think it's August 10th.
Other comments on this one? I would just, I was going to add to this. Yes, it's a priority. And then along the lines of Councilmember Waylon, I think these current ones are ones that we've been doing for a while and we've been doing good at and their process metrics kind of more focused on process. So I think picking objectives that are like data informed, where we could close some inequities and advance equity and whether it's in, you know, across all of our departments. So kind of what is the next step? That's, I agree with that comment.
The next is housing. Again, I'm asking the same questions on all of these. Are these still the right objectives? How does this stack up compared to other goals? Is it still a priority?
Go ahead, Councilmember Supple.
I was looking at the last one and I think I would like, and this is going to be wordsmithing, but I'd rather be celebrating the value of rental housing than communicating it. I don't want to get preachy. I just want to like, hey, this is great. We should celebrate it.
Other comments? Councilmember Waylon.
Just that, yes, this is still a strong priority for me. I think this, not surprisingly, since we talk about it a lot, I think this, this does capture what we need to be doing.
Agreed. Other comments?
Community engagement.
Here, I'll just say, I think the goal is still worthwhile. I, my sense, and I would appreciate hearing from staff as we do the budget process. My sense is that we have under-resourced this goal being effectively implemented. And if that is the case, I, even, even if we're at a place where it's like, okay, if we do everything we say we want to, that's like a nine percent levy increase, that's probably too much. I guess I would still like to see that. So we know what decisions we're making. Cause I, I feel like last year, I, and I, I think I had communicated this to City Manager Rodriguez. Feel like last year I asked if this needed more resources and was, I thought I was told no, but I think it was just a, there's a lot of things we're trying to make happen. So just want to say I agree with this as a goal and also am willing to fund it to make it happen so that it's not expecting Neil to do three jobs.
I just want to echo what Councilmember Waylon said, and it applies to everything that, please don't pre-negotiate things down. You, you can give us something that we say no to and I would, I would love to be in that situation versus not seeing opportunities that could, could exist.
And I would say with this and some of the areas, well, all of the areas, just thinking what are the infrastructure needs? Like Councilmember Supple said internally to make it happen or what are the changes in infrastructure or supports needed? Whether it is people, staff or resources of other kinds. Other comments? Nope.
Then finally, core services. Which we talked a little bit about before.
Unlike some council members, I think we should.
Unlike some council members, I think we should have core services.
And then I just want to end with the community survey and talking about how our residents rated the services that were important to them and the top things were safety, economic health and the natural environment. Those were the top three. And then for action steps, I know we are running out of time. I don't know if you had specific questions for the directors. We will be, I mean, this is part of the budget process because the budget and the action steps are, are intertwined. So this isn't the last time that we'll be talking about it, but do you have something?
Can we just ask directors afterwards rather than have?
Sure. Sure.
I also, I think we had maybe talked about this a little bit in this, laying out what strategic planning will look like. I know many of these are carryovers from the previous year that didn't happen because there was so much extra we needed to do relating to the pandemic. Is there, I guess, as much as staff is able to communicate, like how, I don't have a clear sense yet of like, if there are things that come up during strategic planning, are they almost universally going to have to be 2023 action steps? Or will there be some amount of capacity flexibility? Or kind of like, what's the breakdown there? I don't, I, I didn't see anything here that didn't look like a good idea, but I don't have a sense of like how, how full we are yet.
Sure. And I, I think because we are playing catch up on some of our projects, 2022 is pretty full. But if there is something that comes out of strategic planning that is so obviously a priority, then, I mean, we talked about it before, right? We are going to have to be nimble and be learners and figure that out. But I don't want to have the expectation that we're going into strategic planning and we're going to, we're going to throw out these action steps and start again. So yes, if there's something that is a key priority, it needs to happen sooner because we're going to build on it. Then yes, we are going to have to have that discussion. Does that make sense? Go ahead.
I guess just process wise, I agree with Councilmember Supple's suggestion, but I'm wondering if there's like a way to formalize it and make sure that we aren't just assuming it's a go because we haven't heard from people. Is there like a written process where like we could provide some feedback or check in with you at our next check in? Or some way to do that so it's not just like if we had something we wanted to bring up?
Sure, and we, and we can add it to one of those budget meetings too, to have, to have a discussion about it as well. And we've got, we've got for August 24th, we plan to meet with all directors again.
Okay, any other items before I adjourn our work session? All right, thank you everyone, and I adjourn our work session, thanks so much.